Good afternoon, welcome to 2017. Feels like we do this too often, actually, the years go by so quickly. Okay, adequate notice that this meeting has been given in accordance with the Oakland Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertising the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and the place of the meeting. I just ask that we stand to salute the flag in their moment of service.
(inaudible) 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 It says the start of a new year and we swear in the newly elected committee people from the November election and we're very honored today to have with us to do that is Congressman MacArthur who will be swearing in Mr. Kennas and Mr. Curatolo. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Kennas to step down.
(inaudible)
Yes, come on up, somebody has to hold the Bible here.
(laughing) Fifty-five.
He's almost as tall as you, now see.
(inaudible) (inaudible) (inaudible)
All right, um, do me a favor. Do me, do me a favor, get around this way so we can get it on camera. Works better that way. Left hand on the Bible and raise your right.
Hi, Stephen Kennas.
Hi, Stephen Kennas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties of Township Committee.
Perform all the duties of Township Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support.
And that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith, true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
(applause) He's, he's ready to make America great again. (laughing)
Mr. Curatolo, would you like to step down to be sworn back into office?
Yes.
Would you like to step up?
(inaudible)
We get to do this twice today, so good practice. Raise your right hand, left hand.
Hi, Peter Curatolo.
Hi, Peter Curatolo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties of Township Committee.
Perform all the duties of Township Committee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the government established in the United States.
And to the government established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
(applause)
Then we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda and that is I will be asking for a nomination for a mayor for the year 2017.
Um, Peter Curatolo.
Could I have a second to that?
Oh, second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move on to the next item on the agenda and then we'll swear yous into your position as mayor and deputy mayor. I now ask for a nomination for a position of deputy mayor for the year 2017.
I'm making motion.
To nominate?
To nominate Nicholas Juliana.
Okay, second?
Second.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
And Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to call Congressman up again to swear you as the mayor for the year 2017.
Thank you.
And you can put your deputy mayor one up, please. Here we go, guy. Thank you.
(inaudible)
Just like a mayor, if you're gonna order something.
I, Peter Curatolo.
I, Peter Curatolo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
For the Township of Lacey.
For the Township of Lacey.
So help me God.
Mr. Juliana?
(inaudible)
You switch seats now, sir.
While he's coming up, I wanna wish y'all a happy day.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Did you open this?
Hi, Nicholas Juliana.
Hi, Nicholas Juliana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
The duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
To support the constitutions of New Jersey and the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
For the Township of Lacey.
For the Township of Lacey.
So help me God.
Mr. Juliana?
(inaudible)
You switch seats now, sir.
While he's coming up, I wanna wish y'all a happy day.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Did you open this?
Hi, Nicholas Juliana.
Hi, Nicholas Juliana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform with fidelity.
That I will perform with fidelity.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I am about to assume.
Which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support the constitutions.
To support the constitutions.
Of New Jersey and the United States.
Of New Jersey and the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duties of the office of mayor.
For the Township of Lacey.
For the Township of Lacey.
So help me God.
Thank you, Peg. Congratulations there. Your turn, number six.
Item number six, Resolution 2017-01, making various municipal appointments for 2017.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, designating various municipal appointments and assignments for the year 2017. These are for the liaisons and co-liaisons of the committee members to our departments. Finance and administration will be Mayor Curatolo, Deputy Mayor Juliana. Those departments are administration, municipal clerk, tax collector, tax assessor, treasurer, planning, zoning, board of adjustment, code enforcement, and building department. Community, social services, which includes board of health and local assistance, board is Mayor Curatolo and Committeeman McDonald. Law and public safety, which is the emergency services municipal court and police department, is Committeeman Quinn, Mayor Curatolo. Department of public works is Deputy Mayor Juliana and Committeeman McDonald. Recreation is Committeeman McDonald and Committeeman Quinn. Liaisons to beautification is Mayor and Deputy Mayor. Board of education is Mr. Kennas and Mr. McDonald. Economic development is Mr. Kennas and Deputy Mayor Juliana. Environmental commission is Mayor Curatolo and Deputy Mayor Juliana, which includes illegal dumping task force lake management. Pine lands commission is Committeeman Quinn. Library is Mayor Curatolo and Deputy Mayor Juliana. Municipal utilities authority is Deputy Mayor Juliana and Mayor Curatolo. Senior services is Mayor Curatolo and Deputy Mayor Juliana. Shade tree advisory committee is Mr. Kennas and Mr. Quinn. Municipal alliance committee is Deputy Mayor Juliana, Mayor Curatolo. Americans with Disabilities Act Committee, Mayor Curatolo and Deputy Mayor Juliana. Solid waste advisory is Mayor Curatolo and Deputy Mayor Juliana. Veterans commission is Mayor Curatolo and Committeeman McDonald. Tax search officer is Tricia Grecker, our tax collector, and municipal assessment search officer is myself, Veronica Lorre. Motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes.
Number eight.
Number eight. Resolution 2017-03, authorizing the appointment of a special legal counsel.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Dasty Murphy, McGuckin, Ulaki, Cusaurus, and Connors, a special legal counsel for the Township of Lacey. This is for any conflict matters that our main attorney's firm may have. Motion?
Move it.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item number nine, Resolution 2017-04, authorizing the appointment of a township engineer.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Michael O'Donnell of the, of O'Donnell Stanton and Associates as township engineer for 2017. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 10, Resolution 2017-05, authorizing the appointment of a prosecutor.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Stephen Zabarsky as township prosecutor and Alexander Becker, Morgan Montano, Eugene Race, Ron Deligny, Robert Greets, and Paul Granick as alternate township prosecutors for the municipal court for the year 2017. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 50, Resolution 2017-43, authorizing the appointment of a special legal counsel.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Christopher Dasty of the firm of Dasty McGuckin, Dasty Murphy, McGuckin, Ulaki, Cusaurus, and Connors, and Stephen Smith Esquire as conflict prosecutors for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 11, Resolution 2017-07, authorizing the appointment of a township auditor.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Rodney R. Haynes of Holman, Cranyer, and Allison as township auditor for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2017-08, authorizing the appointment of a public defender.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Brian Romf Esquire as public defender for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2017-08, authorizing the appointment of a public defender.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Brian Romf Esquire as public defender for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2017-07, authorizing the appointment of a conflict township prosecutor.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Christopher Dasty of the firm of Dasty McGuckin, Dasty Murphy, McGuckin, Ulaki, Cusaurus, and Connors, and Stephen Smith Esquire as conflict prosecutors for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 11, Resolution 2017-07, authorizing the appointment of a township auditor.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Rodney R. Haynes of Holman, Cranyer, and Allison as township auditor for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2017-08, authorizing the appointment of a public defender.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Brian Romf Esquire as public defender for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 14, Resolution 2017-09, authorizing the appointment of a conflict public defender.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Christopher Cusaurus of the firm of Dasty Murphy, McGuckin, Ulaki, Cusaurus, and Connors as conflict public defender for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 15, Resolution 2017-10, authorizing the appointment of a labor counsel.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of James Holes Apple of the firm of Sidah Holes Apple and Zabarsky as labor counsel for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 16, Resolution 2017-11, authorizing the appointment of bond counsel.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution in agreement with Megan Bennett Clark of Gluck, Walrath, as bond counsel for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 17, Resolution 2017-12, authorizing the appointment of township physicians.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, appointing Dr. Theodore Endy and Dr. John Coolin as physicians for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 18, Resolution 2017-13, authorizing the appointment of a tax map maintenance engineer.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to East Coast Engineering for tax map maintenance. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 18, Resolution 2014-14, authorizing the appointment of a special projects engineer.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, appointing special project engineers for the Township of Lacey for the year 2017. These are, as we do various projects, we assign them out to various engineering firms. The firms that we're putting on our list this year is the Elamo Group, Remington and Burnick, CME, Gravatt Consulting, T&amp;M, Mazer Consulting, and Beck Engineering.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 20, Resolution 2017-15, authorizing the appointment of a township planner.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Hess of CME Associates as township planner for the Township of Lacey. And this covers the planning board and zoning board of adjustment as well.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 21, Resolution 2017-16, authorizing the appointment of a township architect.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Lenudo Architecture as township architect.
Move it.
Second.
Who made the motion? Tim? Here we go again. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 22, Resolution 2017-17, authorizing the appointment of a title search company.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Midstate Abstract Company and Lafayette General Title Agency for title work for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 23, Resolution 2017-18, appointing, authorizing the appointment of an appraisal company.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to Integral Realty Resources Coastal New Jersey and Henry J. Mancini and Associates for appraisal work for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 24, Resolution 2017-19, authorizing the appointment of Director of Community Development.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, appointing Christopher Reed as Director of Community Development for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Curatolo?
Yes. Item 25, Resolution 2017-20, authorizing the appointment of a recreation director.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Bochy, State of New Jersey, reappointing James Wallen as recreation director for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-one, authorizing the appointment of a municipal alliance coordinator.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the reappointment of Heather Scanlon as the municipal alliance coordinator for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item twenty-seven, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-two, appointing substitute subcode officials.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of substitute electrical, plumbing, fire, and building subcode officials for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
I'm standing.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item twenty-eight, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-three, appointing a public agency affirmative action officer.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Veronica Loray as the Public Agency Affirmative Action Compliance Officer for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item twenty-nine, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-four, appointing Class Two Special Officers.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing a Class Two Special Law Enforcement Officers for the Township of Lacey. This is Edward Agarius Linkowski, Robert Campoli, and Adam Blismel.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty, Resolution Twenty Seventeen twenty-five, appointing school crossing guards.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing school crossing guards for the Township of Lacey. They are Elaine Di Benedetto, Michael Egoth, Margaret Davis, Robert Trupa, Anthony Manines, and Ellen McLean.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-one, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-six, appointing a safety coordinator and an alternate.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Karen Innamorato as the Township Safety Coordinator and Casey Parker as the alternate safety coordinator for the Township of Lacey. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-two, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-seven, appointing a representative and an alternate to the Municipal Insurance Fund.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Veronica Loray as the Township's Representative and Linda Picaro Cavella as the Township's alternate representative to the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund and the Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-three, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-eight, appointing a representative and an alternate to the Community Development Block Grant Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Linda Picaro Cavella as the Township's Representative and Veronica Loray as the alternate representative to the Community Development Block Grant Committee.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-four, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash twenty-nine, appointing a Class Two member to the Planning Board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Christopher Reed as the Class Two member to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-five, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty, appointing a Class Three member to the Planning Board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Gary Quinn as the Class Three member to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-six, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-one, appointing a Class Four member to the Planning Board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Josephine Whitley, Robert Loray, Karen MacArthur, and Al Nappi as Class Four members to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-seven, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-two, appointing an alternate member number one to the Planning Board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Jeffrey Dosell as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-eight, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-three, appointing an alternate member number two to the Planning Board.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Neil Marine as alternate number two to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item thirty-nine, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-four, appointing members to the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Colleen Bradley, Tom Chella, and Edward Scanlon as regular members to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-five, appointing an alternate member number one to the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Troy Burton as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Board of Adjustment.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-one, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-six, appointing members to the Board of Health.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Scott Terrell as a regular member to the Board of Health for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-two, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-seven, appointing members to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing Robert Diesendorf as a regular member to the Environmental Commission for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-three, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash thirty-eight, appointing a member to the Economic Development Commission.
Resolution Township of Lacey, Resolution Township of Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing George Broom and Christopher Dasty to the Economic Development Commission for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
I'm standing. Number forty-four, Resolution Twenty Seventeen thirty-nine, appointing members to the ADA Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the American With Disabilities Act Advisory Board for the Township of Lacey. Those are Veronica Loray, Andrew Rupetti, Craig Tamallo, Dino Lapinka, and John Malone.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Number forty-five, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash forty, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Those are Rosemary Coffey, Lyle Smith, Joseph Sacaro, Bruce Connell, Casey Parker, Paul Cowan, John Raciopi, Jack Nasty, Donald Trapp, and Nicholas Giuliano.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-six, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash forty-one, appointing members to the Beautification Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Beautification Committee, Eleanor Ditten, Lucille Michele, Linda Salzola, Jim Barron, Kathy Barron, Casey Parker, Betty G. Nasty, Holly Martin, and Trish Burke.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-seven, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash forty-two, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Recreation Committee. Normally, we have five on here, so we are looking for members. I have Marie Krieger and Mary Jensen are the two remaining, not because the other ones have passed away. They've just moved out of town. Motion?
Second.
Well, it's senior citizens. She was big. That's where they went.
Okay.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-eight, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash forty-three, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. They're Mary Jensen, Marie Krieger, Mary Canburn, and Eleanor Ditten. We are looking for representation for the Lenoka Harbor section of town and the Bamber Lake section of town, if you know of any senior citizens that are interested. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item forty-nine, Resolution Twenty Seventeen dash forty-four, appointing members to the Veterans Commission.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Veterans Commission. They are Bernie Snyder, Pete Borchester, Jim Wilson, Roy Johnson, Howard Toms, John Malone, Kenneth Hansen, Tom Verleza, excuse me, Brian Holt, Thomas Patrick, William Moss, Bernard Novak, Michael Kilmary, and James Granado. We just recently lost Bruce Baker, who was sitting on that for many years as well. He has passed on last week before Christmas. Motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item fifty, Resolution Twenty Seventeen forty-five, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, appointing members to the Municipal Alliance Committee for the Township of Lacey. They are Reverend Linda Applegate, Chris Brown, Elizabeth Buckholz, Laura Karosia, Dorothy Klup, Robert Klup, Antoinette Connolly, Marguerite De Lambly, Patricia De Sabado, Lorraine Egan, Thomas Faulkner, Debbie Smith, Sharon Hoffman, Nancy Joyce, Peggy Sue Giuliano, Rita Kacasic, Marie Krieger, Bonnie Marshall, Donna McAvoy, Ann Moyer, Marie Mundrick, Robin O'Brien, Mark Principato, Barbara Race, Margaret Rand, Judy Santucci, Edward Scanlon, Bernard Scanlon, Kathy Scanlon, Fred Zabaro, Monica Zabaro, Peggy Snyder, Lois Stalter, Rosa Stites, Judy Spurlack, Joe Talvakia, Laura Timoney, Colleen Tonkovich, excuse me, Joan Topping, Jean Tissimmons, Karen Vincentini, and James Wyland.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Giuliano?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Cortola?
Yes. Item fifty-one, Resolution Twenty Seventeen forty-six, authorizing temporary budget for the year two thousand and seventeen.
Resolution Township Lacey County, Vol. State of New Jersey, providing for the two thousand and seventeen temporary operating budget. This will get us through the first three months of the year while we're working on the two thousand and seventeen budget.